Good evening and welcome to the first of three meetings tonight. My name is Dennis Buckley, Mayor of the City of Beech Grove. And at this time, we will convene our border sanitation meeting for Monday, November the 6th, 2017. In Louisville roll call, I will ask each participant to introduce themselves, beginning on my far right. Dave Harrison.
Dan McMillan, Clerk Trezor.
Craig Wiley, City Attorney.
Sandy Suebert.
Thank you, Board. You have been given a printed copy of the minutes of the previous meeting dated Monday, October the 16th, 2017. Floor is open for questions, comments, or corrections.
I have none, thank you.
I have none either.
No questions, comments, or corrections. I'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll make said motion.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye and the motion carries. This evening, Board, we have six pages of wastewater claims in the amount of $110,755.06. Floor is open for questions or comments.
I have none, thank you.
I have none.
No questions or comments, I'll ask for a motion to approve the wastewater claims dated 11/6 of 2017 in the amount of $110,755.06.
I'll make said motion.
My second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 I also vote aye and the motion carries. We have no unfinished business to carry over from the previous meeting. We have no new business this evening. Comments from Board members?
I have none, thank you.
I have none.
No comments, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn the sanitation meeting.
I'll make said motion.
Second.
The meeting is adjourned at 6:02 PM. We will go right into the Board of Public Works and Safety meeting.
And welcome to the first. And welcome to the first of three meetings.
Okay. Ready? Yeah. Welcome to the second meeting this evening. We will convene the Board of Public Works and Safety meeting for Monday, November the 6th, 2017. In Louisville roll call, I will ask each participant to introduce themselves, beginning on my far right. Dave Harrison.
Dan McMillan, Clerk Trezor.
Craig Wiley, City Attorney.
Sandy Suebert.
Thank you, Board members. You have been presented a printed copy of the minutes of the previous meeting dated Monday, October 16th, 2017. The floor is open for any questions, comments, or corrections.
I have none, thank you.
I have none.
If there's no questions, comments, or corrections, I'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll make said motion.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Board. Next order of business is approval of claims. This evening, we have 51 pages of corporate claims in the amount of $1,747,730.43. Floor is open for questions or comments.
I have none, thank you.
I have none.
No questions or comments, I'll ask for a motion to approve the corporate claims dated November 6th, 2017 in the amount of $1,747,730.43.
I'll make said motion.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye and the motion carries. Thank you. Unfinished business carried over from the previous meeting. I just wanted to briefly update the Board on the brewery permit update concerning the brewery at Third and Main that's going in. Our representative on the ABC is working with the ABC and the owner of the property. And there are some permits that he has to obtain. And I think, actually, maybe here later on this evening, she might want to talk about it a little bit. But I think there's one, I think he has to work with somebody with a title ATC. I don't know, but Dan, you know anything about it from being on the Board?
No.
There's some special.
Something new, I think because they're actually brewing. I don't think this is going to be like a regular outlet, so.
But I wanted to update the Board on, there is something that he has to obtain. And he's aware of, he's fully aware of it, and I spoke with him again about it today. And he's just in the process of doing it, so I just wanted to update you on that. It doesn't need any action this evening, so we'll just move on to new business. We have several items. First is the Medicare supplement renewal for 2018.
Okay. Well, I don't know about you guys, but it seems like these renewal meetings are getting faster and faster.
For sure.
Okay.
Is this the same thing?
There was a little bit of a, there was a little bit of a change. I noticed that there was a little mistake in one of my calculations on our line of duty folks. So that would be the only, the only change. So with the Medicare supplement, we kind of have a little different scenario than we've had in the past years in that we have a renewal of the existing plan, and then we have an alternative plan from the same carrier that is pretty attractive, and I think we need to give it some serious consideration. So with the Medicare supplement plan, it's consisting of two components. You have the Medicare supplement, which backs up what Medicare leaves as out-of-pocket expenses. And then we have separate and apart from that is a prescription drug plan. So the prescription drug plan, it's renewing and it would stay the same regardless of what we did with the Medicare supplement. So as I look at the, the first page that you see shows the current rates and then the renewal rates, and then the factors for what the city contributes towards the cost of coverage. And in my math, the renewal cost is increasing by about 3.7% in total premium. So not too awful bad. But if you flip the page to the second page, it shows the current, the current rates for the current plan, and then a transition to the new policy series that Hartford's putting out. And basically, this new, this new policy series is, was designed to give employer groups the opportunity to upgrade coverage if they so desired. And looking at their add-on packages, to be real direct, I don't know that they would be in the interest of the city or the retirees. I'm sure there may be some that would benefit, but it comes with a cost increase, and I just didn't see the value. What we will see with this, this new platform is that there will be a little bit more emphasis put on the average age of our particular group as they go to do the renewals. And we're on the lower end of the spectrum right now and can save some money over the next couple of years. Will the renewal increases be higher or lower? I don't know. But what we can, what we can say is that from the policy series we're in now, it's going to be closed, which means that there will be no new business going into it, and all the new business will go into the new structure that Hartford is wanting to begin marketing. So I do, I do believe it would be in the interest of the city to take advantage of this opportunity. In so doing, there is one individual that is down in Florida right now that is currently on the traditional plan that we have for all employees. There's, there's actually two Florida participants. One has always been on a, what we'll call a separate plan for Florida residents. She was in Florida when we started the coverage with Hartford, and so she's always been on her separate plan. It's billed with the group billing. The individual that is, has since moved to Florida was allowed to remain on the current structure because she started here. If we make the move, she will have to go over to the Florida structure. I don't think that that's any big difference, what we'll see. From a benefits perspective, we're playing, we're going to pay claims the same as we do now. We pay claims according to Medicare Supplement Plan F policy description. That's what's the current plan, and that's what we're going to do with the new plan. So there'll be no difference in benefits. So from what I can ascertain, the difference is going to be in the rating philosophy with more emphasis given on the average age of the group.
I don't have any questions. I'm pretty content with what's going on, so. Board, do you have questions or comments?
You said this was through Hartford?
That's correct.
Anything else for Kristen?
I'm good, thank you.
Dave?
Nope, I'm good.
Having said that, I'll ask for a motion to approve the recommendation to continue with Hartford in their Medicare supplement.
I'll make said motion.
Second.
Is that proper?
Well, are we going to do it with the current plan, or are we going to transition to their new policy structure?
What's your recommendation, Board?
It would be to go to the new policy structure.
Motion to go to the new policy structure with Hartford.
I'll make said motion.
My second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye and the motion carries.
Okay.
Now, the agenda was a little misleading because I had put on there dental and life insurance, but that was my mistake. I, I just, the clerk and I had talked, and I was so hoping that we could go two years on these things so that we, it would make it easier. We can on the dental, and we're in the middle of a two-year cycle on the dental.
Correct.
So we won't have to hear that again until next year.
Right. And I can update you on the life insurance. The life insurance renews November 1. It renewed without any rate change, and they did put a three-year rate hold, so the next rate action would be November 1st of 2020.
So is that something that we can approve now and stick with that?
I would, yeah. I would definitely, and we would not be able to find.
I see no reason why we would change that.
No. But we could realistically and shopping for it, because I did actually get a quote, or I sought a quote from Nationwide to position the life insurance with the dental and vision. And Nationwide refused a quote. The city makeup is, is basically too high for police and fire content, and then it's also containing quite a bit of retiree population, which has been extremely problematic in getting alternative quotes.
Well, I would suggest we, what would be the motion? To continue entering a three-year?
Well, the three years is on their end, not your end. So the commitment, they're making the commitment that they're not going to take further rate action until November 1 of 2020. So I would, I would just, if it were me, the motion would be just to remain with, with Standard as the carrier that offers that benefit.
Okay, Standard for the supplemental or?
The life insurance.
Okay.
Yeah.
That would be a motion that we would have to make. Someone make a motion.
I got a question before you do. Christian, I can't remember, it was a few years back where we went like from $25,000 to $50,000.
Correct.
Dollar more of pay for $24 a year, basically.
Right.
A lot of the police and fire like that because they're higher risk. Is there any possibility of possibly getting that, looking into it to see if we can't get them extra insurance if they would like it, or do you think that's the limit of what?
Well, there's an, there is an opportunity to purchase additional life insurance on that. Quite frankly, I don't know that on the basic life insurance side where the city's paying a significant portion of the premium, I don't know that I would position that benefit much over $50,000 because you bring in some additional tax consequences that I think would complicate your life in determining how much of the benefit is taxable and how much is tax-free. Right now, all of it would be tax-free.
Okay. Well, like I say, I just thought of that after we met, and I didn't know. But I think even the $50,000 is a, you know, something that is worthwhile.
Sure. And then any accidental death is paid at $100,000.
Right.
And that was one of the first actions you guys took as, as Board.
Yeah.
So you're saying that'd be a two-year cycle or a three-year cycle?
Three.
Well, the, the current renewal will go for another three years, and then we'll see what they do thereafter. I mean, the rates that we have in place now.
Will stay the same.
That have been in effect since 2012.
All right. I would ask for motion to do the three-year life insurance program with Standard.
Standard.
Is that right?
With Standard. And again, the rates are going to stay the same for the next three years?
The rate structure will stay, yes. Now, that doesn't mean the premium won't change, because the premium can change based on the volume of people we have in the plan.
I'll make said motion.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I vote aye as well, and the motion carries. This time next year for dental? Is that right?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. And we've been pretty good on the dental. I mean, I was looking at the numbers, and, and what we're paying now is cheaper than what we were paying the year before. So, you know, we may be able to find carriers that will keep the rates the same.
All right. Kristen, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, Board, is the North Bend Road Drainage Agreement. I had Craig look at the agreement that has been signed by the contractor, and I'll defer to Craig.
No comment.
No comment. We have already approved this, so what we need to do is, the clerk needs to sign off on it, and myself, so we'll go ahead and do that. This, this one's ours, Dan.
Oh, okay.
Now return this to them tomorrow, and then this is their notice to proceed on the North Bend Drainage Project. So they're on the clock.
This was Eagle Valley.
Thank you so much, Board. These people are going to be really happy about this. Next up is required, request to hire part-time DPW.
Good evening, Mayor and Board. Dear Board, it is my recommendation to the Board of Works that the city hire Tom Wilson as a part-time mechanic at the Department of Public Works. This position has become necessary due to the additional city vehicles that will be coming to DPW to be serviced. We currently have one full-time mechanic that would be unable to keep up with the increased workload. Mr. Wilson will provide additional manpower and resources to the garage facility. This position will pay $17 per hour and work no more than 29 hours per week, and there's currently money in the NVH budget to fund this position. If approved, Mr. Wilson would start on November 7th, 2017.
Thank you. Floor's open for questions or comments.
Can you just retire?
Brad, what does the salary ordinance call for?
We don't have this position currently in the salary ordinance. So what happened was the, the police department fire, I think a lot of their vehicles used to get serviced at Brown's, who is now closing. So the plan is to majority of them out to Public Works, to which one mechanic cannot service all those vehicles. So the idea is to bring on a part-time mechanic to provide help. Tom was willing to do this on a part-time basis, and with him having 20 years' experience out there, I think his help would be very valuable to Matt, who is currently our mechanic full-time.
We may have to adjust the salary orders.
Yeah. And that's what I'm wondering, if you need to make an amendment to it before we actually hire him.
What's the highest part-time grade out there now?
Compliance is at 1550.
How about out there at DPW?
I believe they're at either 1450 or $15. But to me, the mechanic was a very skilled labor position, and in my opinion, demanded a higher wage of part-time because he's going to be doing things that's going to save us a ton of money and a lot harder than some jobs that are paying not that much below this.
Well, like I say, I'm not disputing that.
Sure.
I just want to make sure it's done legally from the standpoint of salary ordinance and...
Yeah, there is no part-time mechanic position at all, so it's something that would have to be created.
We might have to, for the, until?
In December, four, we could do the amendment of the salary orders on three readings to accommodate this. But for one check, he may have to fall under the, whatever the scale is out of DPW, Brad.
Okay, so just bring him in as a part-time sanitary labor.
Yeah.
At that rate, okay. And then adjust it.
I think that would work. Do you have any objection?
No, that sounds fine.
Okay.
And just tell him it's temporary until we can amend the salary ordinance.
I'm sure he would be fine with that.
Yeah.
We'll get that, I mean, we're going to get that done. I mean, I don't want to drag him on making 1450 an hour.
Yeah.
Through January and February. I mean, we'll get this done pretty quickly. Is it easy to make that amendment to the salary?
It'll have to be at the December 4th meeting.
Okay.
And we could, if the Board, if the council approves, that we could do it on three readings.
That's to be unanimous.
Yes.
Well, we got a council meeting tonight. Can't we amend it tonight? Or maybe not because it wasn't on.
Yeah, I don't want to hit.
Okay.
Which salary orders are we amending? 2017 or 2018?
Eighteen.
Okay. That's what I thought.
Yeah.
All right.
So I mean, so to be fair to Tom, so like if he was to start on November 7th at 1450, once that's approved, will we go back and pay him the difference?
I would say no. Probably leave it as is.
I think he'd be fine with that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Any other quest? Dave, any questions?
No, sir.
Motion to approve the Director's request to hire Tom Wilson.
I'll make said motion.
My second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye and the motion carries. Stapper?
Okay.
We have several, we have four change orders in the Churchman Avenue sidewalk project. Did you want to look at these, Brad, and go through them with us, or?
I can.
Here's another one. There's two more. I got three, five, and six. Change order three, you just want to go through them? On the first page, there's a reason code and a description. Final quantity adjustment. And can you go through?
Yeah, the first one was, so a credit of $24,000. And this gets into quantities when they design these projects, and I think one of the other ones, you'll see an actual $33,000 to the positive where the design called for not enough material. Sometimes it's stone, or sometimes it's asphalt or dirt. The design on this one, there were a few changes made. So this one was a $24,000 credit on quantity. I'm not sure, I don't see what the actual material was. But then the very next one, change order number four, was a $33,000 change order. So you had a total of 24 to our favor, and then 33 against us to work out what they had to do in the field versus the design. And actually, on the second one, number four, that's, that was, reason code was coded as errors and omissions, which to NDOT is sort of a nick on the designer a little bit where they feel like they should have caught something, or they should have designed around something in such a way where it didn't cause this. But these first two have to do with that, quantity-related items on materials, is what it is.
Can you go ahead and do five and six?
Yep. So five had to do with signage. When IPL took down some poles, there were a couple signs. I don't know if we lost these signs. Me didn't give them back to us. We lost a couple signs, so they had to reproduce. I think it was two or three signs in the area of Churchman and Churchman Bypass. So that's what the $873 was for. And then on six, that had to do with, we cored a manhole down at Churchman Bypass. There's some water that sits, if you go through there very often, right on Churchman, where it splits from the bypass. And we were setting a structure in close proximity. So what we did was we cored the manhole in that direction and extended a pipe so that we can pick that water up down the road with a couple of structures and tie into that manhole and get that water out that way. So that's what that was for, was for them to cored the manhole and put a, an extension in, and then we'll actually extend that out further probably next year.
Was that six the last one?
Yes.
The floor is open for any questions or comments.
With this extra money, is it split, is it going to be split between NDOT and the city? How are the, where are those extra funds going to come from?
The, this project was, it's, you see where $979,200?
Uh huh.
That's funding from the federal government.
Okay.
And so when you do these deductions like we're doing, this is all federal tax dollars. It's come through NDOT, through the Indianapolis MPO.
Right.
And all of these deductions goes back, all of this goes, goes off of that $979,000 amount. And when everything is done, NDOT saves that much money. We don't save, we don't get, the City of Beech Grove doesn't get a saving. NDOT gets that money returned, or gets that money, it doesn't get returned, it doesn't get spent.
But with the change order amount, does that come out of the city's pocket?
No.
No.
And we're still actually under on the contract. If you look, the original contract amount was $979,200. And as of change order six, we are a modified contract amount of $949,637. So we're still almost $30,000 under the original amount.
Right. Okay. And all that still goes under the funding back to the federal government, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Dave, any questions?
No, sir.
What I would like to do is I will just, we'll do these as one. One approval. Need a motion to approve change, change order three, change order four, change order five, and change order six.
I'll make said motion.
My second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye and the motion carries.
Did we have a change, just another question along those lines. Did we have a change order one and two at the last meeting? We did, okay.
Brad, these go to Bob Ices.
Correct.
And can we get a copy of this?
Mm-hmm.
For the clerk's file, unless you want to sign?
Well, we can do that. I, now that you gave me... Well, we can do that, I, now that you gave me four, we can do three, four, five, and six if you wanna do it.
Yeah, let's go ahead and sign them and then we'll be...
We've got everything.
We've got everything. But here is, um, here's the change orders. The project is complete, and, uh, I noticed today they replaced a couple panels.
Yeah.
No, those are extras.
Yeah, we have a, uh, a pre-final walkthrough on Monday coming up with NDOT to walk the project and, um, accept it, uh, look at all the issues and make sure they're all taken care of.
All right, thanks, Dan, thanks, Board, for your patience. We'll move to request to purchase garage doors, DPW.
Dear Board, it is my recommendation to the Board of Works that the Department of Public Works be allowed to proceed with the replacement of four-man doors and three overhead doors and the installation of two overhead door openers. I've secured two quotes for this work with the lowest price of $19,950 from Indy Elite Garage Doors. I would like to make this purchase from the DPW ELTF refund, which was received earlier this year in the amount of $23,681.09. The doors being replaced are in poor working condition and original to the building, which was constructed in 1981. Thank you for your consideration in this matter, and please let me know if you have any additional questions or concerns.
ELTF?
Environmental Liability Trust Fund, so when we, um, when we did our fuel tank removal and they, um, we were in the process of, of doing all of that, a portion of that beyond a initial, um, I don't know, there's a certain amount of money you have to spend before then they cover it through this, is through IDIM, uh, they refund part of that back, so we received $23,000 back, we wanted to put that into the facility, and we have several doors that are old and warped and hard to raise and really like an injury waiting to happen, so I've replaced a few of them, this would replace the remaining doors.
Dave, any questions, comments?
How many doors you have out there?
Quite a few. We have, uh, two overhead doors on Building A and three on Building B, um, we have replaced two of the five, this replaces the last three, and then the others are man doors, uh, we've replaced two of those, and these will replace the remaining man doors on those buildings, and then the openers are something we started doing in Building B because when you yank these doors up sometimes and they don't yet, you know, come up when you yank on them, um, I mean, one work, one workman's comp claim would pay for a garage door opener, so being able to push a button in the winter and raise that up is well worth it, and this would, after this, they would all have openers at that point, so...
I'll make a motion that we approve your, the four-man doors, the three overhead doors, and the, the installation of the two openers for DPW.
I second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye and the motion carries.
I, I did get a second quote, and it was for $28,000 from overhead doors, so this was a good price, I felt like, it was almost $10,000 less, so, thank you.
All right, thank you, Brad. Couple other items that, uh, we do not need approval, but we do need disclosure on. Uh, recently, the city replaced sidewalk and driveway approach at 1446 Biloxi. While the work was being completed, the homeowner also replaced his lateral sewer line and driveway along with the lead walk from the driveway to the front porch. I want to publicly disclose that the city only paid to have the sidewalk and approach replaced, the city did not pay to have the driveway lateral sewer line or the lead walk from the driveway to the porch replaced, so we just wanted to disclose that publicly. And then, uh, next door to that, recently, the city replaced the sidewalk and driveway approach at 1442 Biloxi. While the work was being completed, the homeowner replaced his driveway, lead walk, and porch. I want to publicly disclose that the city only paid to have the sidewalk and approach replaced, the city did not pay to have the driveway lead walk or porch replaced. That's just for public disclosure. So, having said that, uh, comments for Board members?
I have none, thank you.
I have none.
None, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn the Board of Works meeting.
I'll make said motion.
I second.
The meeting is adjourned at 6:37 PM, we will convene City Council at 7 PM, thank you so much.
Good evening and welcome to the third and final meeting tonight, my name is Dennis Buckley, Mayor of the City of Beach Grove, and at this time we will convene our Common Council meeting for Monday, November the 6th, 2017. In lieu of a roll call, I will ask each participant to introduce themselves beginning on my left.
Buddy Templin, Councilman-at-Large.
Jim Brex, Council-at-Large.
Dave Harrison, Councilman District 5.
Dan McMillan, Clerk-Treasurer.
Craig Wiley, City Attorney.
Eda Mascari, Council District 2.
Elizabeth Lampin, Council District 1.
Chris Duffer, District 3.
Kevin Day, District 4.
Thank you, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag
Aye.
of the United States of America
Aye.
and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, I think, uh, it's, it's way too common, but I ask for a moment of silence for those who, uh, were lost yesterday in, uh, Texas, please. All right, thank you. This evening, Council, we have, uh, a couple presentations for you, uh, the first one is from our friends from Indianapolis Power and Light, uh, they are going to speak with you about updating our streetlights, so I would like to introduce Fred Mills, who's the President of Governmental Affairs, and Andrew Wells, the Honorable Andrew Wells, to, uh, talk to you tonight about streetlight improvements. Fred?
Andy? Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, I don't have one of these.
Um, as you said, my name is Fred Mills with Indianapolis Power and Light, and I'd like to thank you all for this opportunity to speak with you. Lot going on in the world of electricity and lighting, and, and I'm sure some of you have seen it, uh, just a lot at your home, as, uh, things have changed, the technology has improved, and, uh, I'm sure you have been making some changes in your own, uh, lights at home, uh, taking out the old incandescent bulbs and, and putting in the, the new, uh, LED bulbs, um, they're ones that use electricity, don't get as hot, and, and are, uh, a part of the wave of the future. Well, the same exact thing is happening in streetlights, and so, uh, the technology has changed and the costs have come down, um, and so, uh, we, as, uh, part of our initiatives at, at Indianapolis Power and Light, have been trying to work to maintain and keep up with that change in technology and be able to be prepared to, uh, offer that to our customers. Now, some of you, uh, may have seen, uh, recently, uh, with the City of Indianapolis, that Indianapolis Power and Light reached an agreement with, uh, the City of Indianapolis to change out their entire inventory of streetlights, which are currently high-pressure sodium, which is, uh, the kind of lights that, um, Indianapolis Power and Light has, uh, in, uh, the City of Beach Grove as well, over to the LED lights. Part of that, uh, the City of Indianapolis wanted to do that to, uh, get to this new technology, over the long term, there are some savings that are involved with that, uh, but it's also about being able to show that you're a progressive city in terms of, of looking at the new technologies. Now, one of the reasons why we have, uh, not necessarily done that, uh, in the past is that, um, similar to the lights that you have at your home, if you've, uh, made any of those conversions, you know those incandescent bulbs were pretty cheap, you know, under a dollar, uh, but the LED lights were a lot more expensive, and that's similar to the, uh, the, the streetlights, uh, that, uh, Indianapolis Power and Light has or, or just about anybody else. LED lights, uh, use significantly less electricity, but the capital costs associated with LED lights, again, just like the lights at your home, are, are a lot more expensive, and when our discussions with the City of Indianapolis, um, one of their challenges, just like, uh, you folks and just like all the municipalities that we deal with, is that in converting lights over, um, you only have so much money in your budget, uh, and so, it, how do you work out, um, this transition from the old technology to the new technology? Well, in the case of, uh, the City of Indianapolis, what happened, um, and this was a negotiation that, uh, Andrew was part of, and took quite a long time, but, uh, with Indianapolis, uh, they were limited in their capital, or, excuse me, in their annual expense budget in their Public Works, which pays their streetlights to about a half million dollars a month, uh, and, uh, they just haven't, uh, increased that amount, and quite frankly, there's a lot of other competing things that, that go for those dollars, so how do we bring in a light that, uh, would have been significantly more expensive because of the capital cost related to the cost of the LED itself? If you figured out the budget, the energy expense is only about 15% of the total cost of our, uh, light bill that we send out to our municipalities, a lot of it is in the capital expense. What happened, and it just so happened, uh, and I'm sure you're familiar with this, with the state legislature giving out some additional, uh, road dollars, uh, they had some capital dollars that they were able and willing to invest to, in a sense, buy down the cost of the streetlight, so in the final negotiation, what was it, 12, 13 million dollars, that the City of Indianapolis is going to pay upfront to basically buy down the cost, the capital expense of those lights, and then going forward, we're gonna switch those lights out, and then they will be able to take full advantage of the energy savings, and it's that energy savings that's going to allow them then to put in somewhere between an additional 3,000 to 4,000 lights in the City of Indianapolis, which was one of the things that Mayor Hogshead had promised to do, was, because the City of Indianapolis really hasn't put in any new lights for about 20 years, so this was a big thing, um, this took a lot of negotiation and a lot of discussion. So, what we are currently doing then, uh, is we are reaching out to our, all of our other municipal customers and seeing if they would like to take advantage of this same thing, and so what we're doing is we are offering an opportunity for our municipal partners to be able to participate in this same conversion, and why is this important? We are going to, the more lights that we can get into this package to do a conversion, we are hoping that's going to lower the cost of the installation, allow us to buy lights cheaper, and be able to put those in, and then to be able to have the communities also to be able to take, uh, advantage of those immediate energy savings that goes along with that. Now, let me give you a few numbers, and then you can understand what's going on with this. Currently, uh, and I just got some of the numbers and we can get them all, but to give you an idea, right now, you are, most of your lights are under what's called a vintage rate, the vintage rate that we established, and I came to talk to you, I don't know, a year, year and a half ago, telling you that, that your actual cost of streetlights was coming down, but the vintage rate was based on, on what I would call a rate case anomaly that, um, provided a situation, um, we negotiated with the commission, uh, that lowered the cost of streetlights, I don't know, around $20 a piece a year, um, for, uh, your basic lights. Uh, we will, uh, be looking at a new rate case here in the next, um, year, uh, that is going to kinda put those back in sync, uh, but in our rate, our previous rate case, we stand, uh, established what was called a vintage rate and a new rate. The new rate was based on the facts of what our current cost would be with our high-pressure sodium lights, the vintage rate was based on the fact that lights were depreciated, um, paid for, that kinda thing, but the, to give you an idea, the spread on a hundred-watt light was, uh, the vintage rate was around $95, but that was based on lights that were paid for and put in 20 years ago, and the current rate would almost be $296, so the $296 reflect, reflects current costs associated with streetlights, with poles, all of those kinds of things. Now, what we are suggesting in the conversion to the LED lights is that if you were to participate in this buy-down, um, that your rate would go up, and this is on a hundred-watt, and each light size has a different price, uh, let me go to your most common light, your most common light is a 250-watt light bulb, currently, you're paying $140 on the, the, uh, 250-watt bulb, the LED rate, if you were to do the buy-down, would be $122, but if you weren't willing to do the buy-down, the cost would be $215, there's substantial difference in terms of getting that capital cost in upfront. Now, why, why do you wanna think about that? Now, something similar to your home, just as, you can still buy incandescent bulbs out there, but the fact of the matter is, the manufacturers have quit making them, and so eventually, and that's why you see more and more LED lights, is the inventory is slowly going away, and you're eventually gonna have to do that, again, the same thing's gonna happen with streetlights. We expect the manufacturers to quit manufacturing high-pressure sodium in the next three years, four years, we expect that inventory to maintain itself maybe another six, seven years, so eventually, you're gonna have to go through that. Now, we understand that there are unique challenges that go along with communities, you, you, I know, like, all the rest of them, you just passed your budget, that kinda thing, but to give you an idea, right now, uh, the City of Beach Grove in total has around 771 lights from Indianapolis Power and Light, there are various sizes, the largest of which is the 250-watt, uh, bulb, and that's a high-pressure sodium, um, but to do the conversion, it would take an upfront cost of around $299,000 to be able to buy down the cost of those lights. In doing that, your annual bill savings, we estimate, will be almost $29,000, and I know it's important, you got capital cost and you got operating cost, uh, but, uh, you'll, you'll be able to experience... But you'll be able to experience $29,000 a year in savings. So the savings itself will pay itself off in 10 years. LED lights last a lot longer. They estimate 20 years or more. So there's good return on that value. The other thing we understand, again, is there's dollars that you have to worry about in terms of your budget. And so we are working with all of the communities to say, it's going to take us about three years to convert these lights. So we're saying, if you'd like to make a payment each year over those three years, that we would also allow you to do that. So you're actually looking about a payment of around $100,000 a year over a three-year period to participate. So again, here's an opportunity to show the progressiveness of Beach Grove. The reality of it is, you're going to get there anyway because the lights are doing that. We're trying to offer a program that allows you to work within the budgets that you have, be able to get this thing moving forward, to be able to get those savings a lot quicker. And we think it would be something that you'd like to consider. And I think that's the idea today, is to give you some information, let you folks think about it. We're trying to get folks to make some kind of decision in the next couple of months because we are going to start the process of putting the RFP together. And obviously, the more lights that we can get on that RFP, we think it'll bring that cost down. And we will share that cost savings in terms of the RFP. These are based on estimates in terms of installation, that kind of thing. But bringing all of the communities on board with this just increases that amount. And we think will bring the overall cost down for everybody. So that's kind of what's going on. Like I said, it's something that we have presented to all of the communities we serve, Lawrence Speedway, Beach Grove, Cumberland. They are all thinking this is probably something that they ought to do. Obviously, everybody has unique situations because of the budgets and things like that. But we're trying to make it as easy as possible, given the realities of the cost associated with this, the technology and the way that works. But, you know, I think this will be something, a real improvement, both for the community and for your constituents. Can I answer any questions?
So Indianapolis is doing this?
Yes.
And then, so if we, I guess the word partnership with Indianapolis, the more municipalities you get to join in on this, the cost will come down for us?
That's what we're hoping.
That's what you're hoping for, okay.
So just to give some more background on that, the city of Indianapolis is converting their entire inventory, which is, well, 98% of their inventory. There's some stragglers that have other issues.
Okay.
27,800 lights or somewhere around that. So by them taking that big pool of lights, they're getting a volume discount from the manufacturer on the price. Because if we took Beach Grove's roughly 800 lights by themselves to GE to try to get a volume discount, we wouldn't be able to get it. We don't have enough volume there, right? So with Indianapolis driving a volume discount with nearly 28,000 lights, we're then asking the municipality to tag on their 500, 800s here or there in hopes that, well, not only do you get to take advantage of a volume discount you otherwise wouldn't, but maybe the additional 3,000 or 4,000 from the other municipalities will bring that price down a little bit more.
And this is a program, I hate to sound like a car dealer, we're only going to offer this deal once. But it just makes sense to try and do all this at once that we can. Otherwise, we'll just get you into the current system that we have in terms of that evaluating. And you'll be looking at, like I said, these higher costs because we'll get it back in the regular cycle of our tariff.
Is there grant money or federal monies at all to assist with us to?
You know, I asked, A, streetlights, and you can talk to your folks, streetlights sometimes qualify under your road money. And in fact, a year ago, the legislature passed that, and I believe your community qualifies for that matching grant. You need to check that. However, I was told with the town manager of Cumberland that they really clamp down on the things that qualified for that. But some street dollars do qualify, where streetlights qualify within that street light or the street rehabilitation, just the same way as, you know, curbs and sidewalks and that kind of. It's definitely some, I'm not as familiar with that. But it's definitely something that I'm sure the experts that you deal with should check into.
Okay, okay.
When you say we have a vintage rate right now of $95 and that the current rate is $296, explain that to me. Is that per light? Is that?
That's a per-year charge, per light.
Per year, per light?
Right. The vintage are the ones that were already in place, that had been there a long time. But any new ones that you may have put in that were high-pressure sodium came in at that much higher $296 rate.
Okay, and then say, say we buy all-new LED lights and pay that 300,000, what would be our savings then? Because earlier in your speech, you said that the cost of the LED are 15% of the others.
That's the energy cost.
Right.
The energy cost.
So what would be our cost then, per light, per year then?
Okay, if on a...
What are you paying for?
If you were paid for, the rate on 100 watt would be $104 as opposed to your vintage 95. On 150 watt, it would be $108 versus $111 that you're paying now on the vintage rate. And under the 250 watt, which is what you have more of than any, in fact, that makes up about half of your lights. Your vintage rate is $140, but the LED rate with the buy-down would be $122. So a lot of it depends on if they're pole-mounted or steel column-mounted, that kind of thing.
That seems like it's not quite, I mean, if the cost is 15% of current...
It's the electricity cost. You've got to understand, there's a lot of things associated with the cost that we charge on your streetlights. There's the cost of the lines just going from one light to the next. There's the cost of the generation that goes along with producing the electricity. There's the cost of maintaining the pole and things like that. That is why the energy savings don't get you to the big savings of converting from regular lights to the LED lights. Energy only makes up about 15% of the total cost, you know. I've got high-priced executives like this guy I've got to pay for. No, that's a good kid. But it's our overhead, it's, excuse me, it's all the other things associated with getting those lights there, operating, maintained, all those things. The energy portion only makes up a very small portion of the total cost.
Do you have all those figures in a document that maybe you could share with us?
Many documents. The answer is yes. So Chris, we have a, Ellie, so if you think of your utility bill, your electric bill, you'll have an energy charge, a customer charge, and various things on there. And if you change an LED bulb out in your house, you're only reducing the energy charge on your bill. So your customer charge stays the same. Your fixed charges all stay the same. The streetlight tariff, the streetlight rate is built the same way. But it's billed to you as a city, not, like, it's not broken out like that on your bill, like your residential bill. So when you change the bulb, for lack of a better phrase, from LED, you're only affecting that energy part. We have a lot of PowerPoints information that we could share with you that breaks that down. I'm going to tell you, it's dense, but I'm more than happy to get it for you. Or, if we could walk you through it.
I don't know that I need a big, thick document because, you know, I'm not going to read that.
Well, we've got smaller ones, but I'm just saying, it can be dense, but we are more than happy to share with you. I just don't want to make it more confusing than what it already is.
I remember when I used to be clerk treasurer, what was the cost per month electric charge for the lights? Dan, you remember?
If I'm not mistaken, I wrote a check today for $11,000. But I don't know if that was everything, street lighting, or not.
So Fred, what would you anticipate? Would the bill go down then ultimately?
You're going to save about $29,000 a year.
Okay.
Is what we're estimating.
And that's over all those costs? Even the fixed cost that you were talking about?
Mm-hmm.
Correct.
Okay.
So...
Yeah, this would be a much harder sell if it was, if I was going to charge money and your bill would go up. But there are actual savings that you're going to get. So you'll get a payback, we estimate, nine, 10 years. It'll pay for itself, and then you'll have those savings going forward.
So we anticipate, right now, we're modeling the life, the annual life of the streetlights is 20 years. There's some industry folks saying it's 25 years. We don't know yet, just because nationwide, there aren't a lot of LED streetlights out there to have a good sample size. So it could be closer to 25. But right now, we're modeling 20 years. And then these GE lights that we've lined up and tested to use, IPL has, comes with a 10-year warranty as well.
Okay.
So if there are, you know, in the first 10 years, obviously, if there's malfunction or things like that, no cost to the city to have that replaced where currently, there would be a charge to roll a truck and to have a troubleman go out there and repair and do that kind of work.
How about the actual lighting? Have you had people, you have any statistics or anything on the brightness and the lighting and the comparison to the other as far as satisfaction?
The light, first of all, is bluer. It is, your current high-pressure sodium has kind of got that yellow phase. One of the things they talk about in LED lights is that it's a bluer light, which makes it cleaner, and so you can see better. That's a big positive that goes along with that. These can also be adjusted. The only downside with these, because it's brighter, people are going to go, you know, it's coming into my house. But you can actually sit there and direct it to where the scope of the light comes out. You can really adjust it better so it goes exactly down to where you want it to go.
And our, I haven't asked him specifically about Beach Grove, but I know that our folks at Moore Street that do the street lighting have indicated they're willing to work with the municipalities on, let's get the temperatures right and the colors right for what you need and for what you want. If you haven't, and as Fred mentioned, if we have an issue where there's a light and it's, you know, the resident there, the business there doesn't like how it projects, these are easily adjusted within the fixture itself. So you just, they'll come out and get that to where the city wants it and how they want it. And that's a flexibility that these LEDs have that the others don't.
And then around the schools then? So this was, does that include any of the lighting around the schools or that's a separate, would that be a separate proposal?
If the school, if the schools have their own lights, we would deal with them separately.
Okay, and I don't know that that's the case or not. We, I'm guessing the city lights, all the...
It would just depend on who owns, it would just depend on who owns the streetlight in that area. It could be, it could be Beach Grove, it could be the school system.
But we're trying to deal just with the municipalities just because of the broadness of this program. It's going to take us about, literally about three years to do this conversion. It's just, that's how long it takes to do 30-some-thousand lights.
And that's the same even if we added all the other municipalities in with Indianapolis, it's still a three-year timeframe. You would be put in, probably geographically as we're moving around the service territory, whenever we got to the southeast quadrant, that's when Beach Grove would start getting done.
If you added the school lights in, it wouldn't help?
It could, but I would imagine that the city schools of Beach Grove probably only have a few dozen lights, if that. And you in the city may own a good portion of the ones that we think are our school lights.
Outside, yeah.
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 As far as Indianapolis doing all their lights, a unique situation in Beach Grove, Emerson Avenue, Sherman Drive, Albany and Churchman is all done by Indianapolis. That would be something that would be replaced by them?
We would, those would all be part of the conversion program.
Yes.
For Indianapolis, not like Beach Grove.
If the light is currently billed to Indianapolis, it's part of the conversion program.
Okay.
And we have similar situations in all of the communities. Some of them, up in Lawrence, for example, 56th Street and that bridge, that's all Indianapolis. But the fort and some of the stuff down there is the city of Lawrence's.
And that's one, that's something that the city should, Beach Grove should be cognizant of because if the Indianapolis thoroughfares become LED and Beach Grove stays with the high-pressure sodium, at least till we're out of high-pressure sodium and are putting LEDs in, you're going to have a mismatch of colors. And it's going to, colors and light flow, and it's going to, I mean, we'll help you mitigate that, but you can only do so much because, as I mentioned before, the high-pressure sodium lights don't give you as much flexibility and adjustments as the LEDs do.
So I have a question with, so we're doing, you said Indianapolis already signed up for 28,000 conversions?
Right.
What's the reduction in maintenance costs on these lights versus the high sodium?
We expect the costs that are associated with the maintenance of these is less. But that's calculated into the price that we put together.
Would that reduction in maintenance costs translate into reduction in customer charges?
Right, it did. That's how we...
It's come to the 29,000.
But just, because for me, like, to Dan's point, at the 15% of cost, there has to be a percentage in savings.
There is.
For charges.
There is.
That are also going to be factored in there.
Right. That's all factored in there.
It's the O&amp;M piece, the operation maintenance piece, is about, we're projecting about a 32% reduction.
Would you foresee, as far as infrastructure and supply, would those new lights reduce failures on infrastructure and supply because of the less of a draw?
That's what they're telling us.
Right.
You know, one of the things, as he talked about, is the manufacturer will only give a 10-year warranty. Well, the reason they only give a 10-year warranty is they've only been around about 10 years. So they just don't know. But their testing has shown a certain reduction in terms of outages, a certain reduction in terms of maintenance costs. Not all of your maintenance costs go away. I don't know what your number is here. You'd be surprised how much of our maintenance is just replacement of poles and lights because somebody hit them. It's a much higher, it's a much higher number. But just in terms of, if everybody leaves alone, things like that, yeah, your maintenance, your O&amp;M costs maintaining do go down. And so we calculated that based on the projections that the manufacturers gave us and other experiences that other communities have had.
I just thought it would be interesting to see, you know, over a five-to-10-year timeframe, you know, if the outage rate or, you know, the maintenance and the infrastructure doesn't have to be worked on as consistently, is IPL going to translate in that savings to the customers?
Go ahead.
Yeah, so that was a big discussion point with the negotiations with the city is because there's a lot of unknown as to what that really is.
Yeah, oh yeah, it's still early on.
We don't, right, we don't know. So based on what the industry has experienced so far, we've, IPL's projecting currently about a 32% reduction in the O&amp;M piece, which is reflected in the 29,000 a year savings Beach Grove. But see, now, but what is it going to be in the future? Could be greater than that for all we know, right? If they're as good as what the manufacturer and other industry folks say, it'll be greater than that. But what we've committed to do, and this would affect Beach Grove as well, is in subsequent rate cases, when we go back in, we'll update that number with actuals. So if it ends up being, you know, three or four years, five years down the road and we're in for another rate case, we'll update our streetlighting tariff. And if it's a 40% reduction or a 50% reduction in O&amp;M,
We'll pass that along.
That'll be in, and we'll pass that along in the new rate.
Okay.
Just one last question. You were talking about most of our lights are 250-watt sodium. What is the wattage rating then on one of those LEDs for whatever the amount of lumens would be that it puts out?
No, we, and I'm not very good at this. The lumens, we estimate on the 250 would be 12,500 to 13,500 lumens. Now...
And then its wattage rating?
It doesn't convert. You know, just like your home wattage on your LEDs at home, 100-watt incandescent actually only uses about 15 watts of electricity. I do not know what the wattage is on that.
So, it's around, and it depends on what type of fixture it is, what, you know, there's a lot of factors that go with the LED that aren't necessarily true with the old lights because it's just evolved, right? The general rule is it's about 50%. If you tried to force a wattage, it'd be about a 50% reduction in wattage. But the lumens is the key. So you're getting the same lumens or more lumens for a lower energy and demand cost, an O&amp;M cost.
And if you, I don't know if you looked at that thing. I'm just amazed about, I'm so used to a light bulb and all I see is like a circuit board, you know. But that's how this technology... that's, that's how this technology works.
I have one more question. And this is, might be me being naive about utilities, but you own the lights, right?
Yes.
Okay. You guys charge for the lights?
Yes.
Why are we going to pay for you to upgrade your lights?
The, again, think in terms of a lease on a car.
Okay.
All right? You can, you can pay a full lease, or you can buy down that lease payment.
Okay.
It's the same way on what we're doing with these, is that I'll be glad to charge you the full lease, or if you want to buy down the cost, so your monthly payment is less, you can go that route. And that's, that's what we're proposing. Quite frankly, it doesn't make a difference to us. And we just think you want to get to your savings sooner, you want to take advantage of that quantity discount that goes along with this, but, yeah, the cost is what it is. It's all approved by the IURC, and we give them a capital cost, we give them a main, an operation cost, we give them an energy cost, and that's how you come up with the rate.
What happens when they run out of high-pressure sodium bulbs? Do we just go in the dark if we don't want to do it?
Uh, you're going to go to the LED, or you're going to go in the dark?
Yeah. Because what'll happen is, is when the high-pressure sodiums, which will probably do that in the, in, not the, he mentioned a rate case within the next year, we're not going to have any, we won't have, we won't get rid of the HPS rates then. But in the next rate case after that, what we'll do is we'll probably reconfigure and put in a new LED rate, which currently, as he, as he mentioned, is around that $200 range of a price. That's what will be the tariff rate. So then, once we run out of inventory for HPS, we'll go to the municipalities that didn't join on this and say, what do you, you know, we're going to have to start replacing them if you want to keep them, because we can't get HPS anymore. And you'll have to pay the $200 rate, or like you said, go in the dark, which we hope you don't, we don't recommend that.
I have just one, one more thing. So like, we have projects coming up and, and, and just different things coming along, like the Thompson Road sidewalk project. So in the next several years, as this thing, you know, comes together, these additional lighting possibilities, though, these numbers of 771 could go up based upon, you know, new lighting and new progress as far as infrastructure building and stuff.
Right, but the conversion price and what we're trying to do here will just be a one-time thing, then you'll have to go, yeah, it's just...
You're taking into account the possibility of additional lighting.
Right. Because we're going to, you're going to be putting a bid out.
Right.
So once we put the bid out, that'll be it.
She mentioned Thompson Road. The Thompson Road would be Indianapolis anyway.
Not for the trail.
Not for the trail, yeah.
One side.
Not the sidewalk.
Outside would be.
Sidewalk project.
Well, and that's going to be where you're going to get, those are areas where you might get into the mismatch situation where some lights are Indianapolis, so there'll be LED in the others if you didn't join with. So you all need to consider that.
We appreciate your time. If you've got additional questions, the mayor's got my number. We'll be glad to answer anything, give you any information that you want. I just ask that you think about it. Obviously, all of the other communities are the same way. I can tell you that Lawrence has said that they are probably going to do it. They like that fact that they can pay it over three years. They want to move forward with this new technology. Speedway, we believe, is going to go that route. Cumberland is definitely looking at it. But, you know, you all have the same kinds of tough decisions. You only have so much money and things like that, but we tried to do it in a way you could foot it, foot it into your budget planning. We knew it was too late to deal with it this year, but over the next three years, you could make those kinds of payments and things like that. And that's something that you can adjust. And you also have a little bit of time, like you said, in looking for other grants, things like that, to get that as well. So thank you very much for your time. And again, if you have any questions, please feel free to reach out, and we'll be glad to help you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We will defer on the IPL recommendation until probably the meeting in January. They'll give us a chance to discuss it a little bit, from a financial standpoint. And then I'll ask a recommendation from the council, probably in January. So, next up on special presentations is the redevelopment commission 2018 budget presentation. And the budget is up for your approval this evening as well. So I'll defer to the RDC.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the City Council. I have to, as part of the law, have to give a 2017 report and our goals for 2018, as well as the budget. 2017 was a good year for us. We, we committed to the Greenway, $95,000 for engineering and environmental studies, to ensure that the Greenway is going along well. And it is where, where we need to be. We probably could move up earlier if we needed to. Other things we committed to was St. Francis Hospital, just in case we need to do infrastructure repairs around it, or to help that property become more marketable. That wasn't needed. We did propose working with the sign grants, and that kind of was a miss for us. And then one of the other things we, excuse me, we came up and thought of this year was a beautification of the I-465 Emerson Avenue exit. When you go to different states like Ohio and states like that, you'll see communities that have really nice-looking exits. And with this, with this proposal, we will be the first community and the first exit in Marion County to actually have signage or beautification. One of the things, we had a Mr. Truell from Ball State come and talk to us. And, you know, a lot of times, communities chase businesses and, come, come here, move to Beach Grove, bring your business here, we'll give you tax breaks. And I don't necessarily agree with that, because I don't think it's fair to businesses that already exist that pay their taxes. So what we have kind of done is, we flipped it around, and, and the RDC's philosophy is, what can we do to make Beach Grove better, so that people will want to live here? And when you have people wanting to live here, you'll have businesses that will want to come here. It's kind of like, which came first, the chicken or the egg? And so far, our investments over the past five years have been in parks. We've put a lot of money into the parks. We've helped on roads and sidewalks, you know, when the mayor's asked for help. We've helped with the school system. And we contacted Mr. Parsons, they're a group that does it. And what we're going to propose for this next year will be the first two signs that'll go on those exit triangles. And I sent you guys out a PDF, I think Mrs. Lamping has one, but it has what, actually, what the signs look like. Now, they did a rough estimate, and the whole project's about $2.1 million, but that was a high-end estimate, which I'd rather have than a low end. And I hope to work with the City Council and the mayor next year to start working towards doing that, because I think anything we can do to improve the image or visibility of Beach Grove will benefit the homeowners, in that it'll increase demand to live here. If people want to live here, it'll increase the interest of business to want to come here. So, part of our budget for 2018 is to first, pay the bonds, that's always important, that's 499,000. We did commit to the mayor last year in our budget, and this fall, that we would additionally budget another $30,000 for Greenway work. Again, we want to keep that project going, because that's over $3 million of investment in our community. It's like putting a, a new roof on your house. And as the mayor often points out, and I pointed out when I first tried to come onto the RDC, we are the only community that does not have a Greenway around here. By asking to name a city, any other city, they have a Greenway, they have a trail, or they're building trails. They are what people want to use, or what they want to walk on. It's cheap entertainment, and they like walking through their communities. So, it is something that will bring us to compete with Greenwood, Irvington, and the communities around us. It's, to me, it's very important that we, we upgrade that. Again, it's an amenity that will help our city, and it'll help, again, the average homeowner, in that it makes our, our community more attractive. But the initial beautification, we put down $250,000. It may not be that much, we may not get to it next year, but I think it's a worthy goal to try. And again, I think we should start working towards that beautification. You know, you look around communities, it only takes one bad actor, a couple of bad actors, to stain a community. And getting over that stain is, is often difficult. And I can't remember how many years it's been since we've had the trouble out on Emerson Avenue. But about three months ago, or four months ago, I saw reference to Beach Grove just off of that Walmart incident that happened years ago. It's still a stain, even though it hasn't happened in a long time, and we've cleaned it up, but it's, you know what I mean? It's, it's hard to have, it's hard to get a good reputation, it's easy to lose it. And we need to keep working on that, and that's what the goal of the RDC's been. So I think this is a worthy project, and I'd hope for your support on it. As far as 2018 goes, we'd like to, I guess, fund the signage, continue with the Greenway. We've got, we're going to try to make sure that we have at least one member of the RDC on the community-based initiative committee. I've gone to a few of those meetings, I think Ms. Chapel's gone to a couple. And, you know, we'd still like to do a, we did it a few years ago, where we had like a, a meeting with all the departments, everybody to talk about, what the goal is Beach Grove. One of the things that was presented is, we need to probably work on our master plan, as far as what we want the city to be going forward, and what our vision of it is. That's very important, given, you know, that millennials are starting to come up and buy houses, and they're moving into that, you know, 18 to 34 range. And, and those are the people we need to attract to Beach Grove, to ensure that our community is growing and, and doesn't get old and, and, you know, replaced with younger people. So, we need to start looking at our master plan. And the RDC doesn't have the resources to do that, but we'd like to help. But I think it's something that the mayor, the city council, and all of us should definitely start working on, because our master plan is very old and out of date. And I mean, it, it doesn't sound like 10 years is a long time, but it is a long time for us not to have updated that. So that's something else, I think, for 2018, we'd like to look at. And finally, I'd like to thank Ms. Chapel, Ron Moat, Ed Bell, and Jay for serving on the RDC this last year. Again, they serve at your discretion and the mayor's discretion, but they volunteer their time. If there's extra meetings, they also volunteer to go to them. And Kathy and Ron, I think, have been on it for seven years now, or six years, I can't remember which. But they're pretty special people. And then, again, they always give up their time. And Kathy types away and records all the meetings and does all the minutes. So I'd really like to thank her, because that is a thankless job. You know, it takes time, and you have to submit them, you pray to God you don't have grammatical errors, because somebody will point it out. So I want to thank her for that. And if there are no questions, I want to thank you guys. We will have one more meeting this next Thursday, and then we are done until January, when you guys will appoint new members, and the mayor will appoint a new member. So, with that, I'll take questions. If not, I'll wish you a good evening.
So, the meeting's this Thursday, or the...
I think it's this Thursday.
Okay.
I gotta get the meeting notice. I've been busy time.
And this information we have here is just ideas, right?
Well, yeah. If you look, these are, yeah, we haven't, that's the expensive part, but, but yeah, this is the initial concept. But what we, at the RDC, we're looking at is one of these would go on each of the triangles on the off-ramp, one coming from the east and one coming from the west. Because those are the areas that we could, we already mow them, and it wouldn't be hard to maintain them. And again, it initially, and I mean, you think about the traffic, if you're ever there at 5:00 on any evening, there are thousands of cars getting off that exit. And, you know, nice signage, saying this is Beach Grove, it's a positive image. And that's really what I think we need for this city, is we need to be as positive as we can. Because I'm telling you, positivity, it promotes good feelings, and people want to go there. And it's not an easy process, if you think about it. Think about Fountain Square. 15, 20 years ago, you went to Fountain Square if you wanted to get in trouble or drugs or something like that. And now, I mean, there's, there's $1,500 a month apartments along Virginia Avenue. It's a happening place, people want to live there. They got that show on HGTV based out of there. And again, it didn't take, it's hard work, but it's got a positive image now, and people want to go there. So that's our goal with Beach Grove, is give a more positive image and get people to want to come here.
Have you already got permission from the state of Indiana for...
We have not, and that's where Kevin and them will come in. They will help us with that. And one of the other things, because again, we don't have a grant writer, but we'd like to look into grants and what we can do. Because, again, I think this is something that, if the city of Beach Grove is successful, I could see other cities along the 465, like Speedway or Lawrence, or even the city of Indianapolis. And the thing about it is, is the city of Indianapolis tried this. And if you remember, along I-70, all the exits from the downtown out west to the airport, they, they tried to put in landscaping and stuff like that. And they put it in, and it looked nice for the first six months, but they never budgeted money or anything to upkeep it. So that's where we'd want to come to the city council and the mayor, because the RDC, we can fund things, but we cannot maintain them. So in other words, we could fund this and build it, but if we don't maintain it, it's going to look awful if weeds are growing over or graffiti's on the Beach Grove sign. So we'd want to come, you know, to the, the city council, we'd want to figure out some way where we could budget money to have maintenance on that and make it look nice. Because if, like, you look, when you get off at McCarty Street, Eli Lilly does those intersections and stuff like that, and they maintain them, and they look really nice. Maybe we don't have to go to that level, but we, we'd need a level of commitment. And what'd we commit, Mr. Mayor? About $3,000 for lawn maintenance for the different areas around here this year? So, you know, you may be looking at another $3,000 to $4,000 to do that. I, I don't know, this is so initial, but I think it's something worth pursuing. And I was going to mention, on the LED lights, we did help the mayor fund Emerson Avenue. We did those LEDs. And, and it just, I thought it was a good idea, because again, the savings, it's something that you could say in 10 years, you'll save what you put into it, and after that, you'll start going in the black on it. But I, I thought it was a wonderful idea, and the RDC voted unanimously to support the mayor when he, he came to us about that. So, I was just throwing that little tidbit in there as well.
So that, does that mean you might have some funds to help with more LED lights?
Well, again, the way I look at it is, this, the RDC, it's, again, invested in our community. And like, you look outside these windows right now, you see these orange lights they're talking about. They cost more money, they're not as reliable. And yeah, if I could replace those, those out there with a light that's better and it's going to shine in somebody's house, provide more level of safety, absolutely, that's improving our community. Where, where I struggled, like I say, is we've had businesses come to us and say, well, we want money for this. And, well, how do I give the business money when the business next to them is paying the taxes on it? And, and I can't, in my mind, say that's fair or right. And that's where, you know, I know everybody's going after Amazon and that money, but if, you know, if your community, and like I say, if your community gets a business, a lot of times, the people that work in that business don't live in your community, but your taxpayers who live in that community are paying for that business. And that's what the RDC has tried to stay away from. Now, if somebody said, hey, if you could prepare our sidewalks, or this alley is horrible, if you could pay to have it repaved, that's legitimate, because that's a function of government. And yeah, we would help with that enthusiastically, but, you know, we had somebody ask us for a roof. We're not doing that. If I give a roof to them, I have to give a roof to everybody on Main Street. And as the mayor has shown, there's a couple of businesses that need roofs, roofs and walls and other things. So, that's where we've kept it. We're focusing on the community and what we can do to make it better. That's it. I thank you all, and I hope you approve our budget. Have a nice night.
Thanks, thanks to you and your committee for their hard work.
Thank you, ma'am.
And Mayor Wile, Don's here and Kathy's here, just thank both of you in person from the council on your, your work. And of course, the rest of...
Don, do you want this back?
It's mine.
Oh, that's yours? Okay, I'm sorry. The, uh, RDC budget for 2018 does need council approval, so I'll open it up for any discussion. If there's no discussion, I'll ask for a motion to approve the redevelopment commission budget for 2018.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. Final presentation tonight is from the fire department concerning the new purchase of radios. Earlier this evening, the Board of Works approved a claim of 137,000 for radios for the fire department. And I think that is a really, really good first step. So they're here tonight to share with you the type of radio that has been purchased. So I'll turn it over to the operations chief, Jim Pierce. Jim?
Okay, evening, council. I'll, I'll keep this brief. As you know, a few months ago, I stood, stood up here and told you that we were coming to the end of the life of the current radios that we had in, in use at the fire department, and that we were going to need to purchase new. Well, thanks to your work and the, and the Board of Works, we were able to secure the funds to go ahead and order these radios. We got them in just about three weeks ago, and we've got them... We got them in just about three weeks ago, and we've got them programmed, and they're actually out on the streets. So, what's been going around right now, the, the green one is the fire radio, these are assigned to all the fire engines, they're a specifically designed radio for use in the fire service. They're a heavy-duty radio, it's designed to withstand high temperatures, it's got exaggerated buttons and features on it, so that firefighters with big gloved hands can still use the radio without fumbling through it. So, it's, it's a, a big upgrade for us, 'cause we've, we've never had a fire-specific radio before, so we're pretty excited about that. The other one that's coming around, the black one, is the standard radio that we've issued to all of our admin staff and to the ambulances. It's not quite as ruggedized, it's not rated to be in hazardous atmospheres like that radio, and subsequently, it was a little bit cheaper, about three hundred and twenty-five, three hundred and thirty dollars per radio, cheaper than the fire radio. So, we felt like it was a better, better spending of our money not to have the high-dollar radios for areas that we didn't need. But with that, we were able to equip every seated position on every apparatus in the fire department, which is also very nice, so that, you know, when we're working special events and things like that, we're not stealing radios from other places to, or borrowing from downtown to staff our special events. So, very excited to have these out here, the, the men and women of the department were really thankful to get them. I was very thankful in the fact that we were able to get this before the end of the year, because I was able to negotiate a, a trade-in value on our old radios, that if we didn't get this done by the end of the year, they were not gonna give us anything. So, we were af, actually able to get some trade-in value from our old radios. So, we're pretty excited about that as well.
I hate to interrupt you, can I ask you something while I got these?
Sure.
What's this for?
What's?
What's this?
Uh, that's a lapel microphone that fits up here on your chest, so that you can-
Talk from?
Yeah, you don't have to pull that out of a holster, or have it, and fi, and the firefighters wear that underneath their coat to protect it, so that mic sticks out from underneath their coat, so they can talk on it. What's nice about these radios, they've actually designed them with all the controls on the lapel mic, so they can change channels, they can turn it up and down, it's actually got a work light to it, so there's lots of nice little features that, that we've never had before either, so, that's what those are for.
What about impact, dropping in, are the, the new cases, are they pretty strong?
Yeah.
Protect them that way?
Yeah.
Lot stronger than they used to be?
Yes, they are.
Broke one?
Uh, yeah. They're a lot stronger, both of them are waterproof, the green one's actually submersible, that we can drop it into a bucket of water, and it'll still work. They have special technology that makes them usable in high-noise atmosphere, wind, things of that nature, you don't get a lot of background noise. So, a lot, a lot of neat upgrades to them, they have a lot of flexibility for us, for technology as we grow. One of the other things we're looking at is when we, we start getting ready to get new air packs, we're gonna have Bluetooth microphones in the, in the facepieces of our air packs, which will connect to these radios, so no longer will the firefighters have to talk through a mask into the radio, which tends to garble communications quite a bit. They'll have a microphone right next to their mouth, so it'll be just like talking through a regular radio. So, very excited about all that. But, again, thank you for your hard work and your approval and our funds to get these out on the streets, and they were needed, and they're gonna be put to use.
Geez, I don't think Councilman Brooks here, he wants to come back, he won't get rid of that microphone, his radio, hanging on to it.
I don't know, I don't know if those are Councilman Brook-proof radios. I've seen some of his radios.
Now, is there any problem with, I know our department and the police department also runs quite a bit out of the city.
Yes.
No problem with range?
No. No, with, with being on the countywide system, it's, there's a series of towers all over the county that these radios hit on and, and repeat through, so, anywhere in Marion County, or really the Donut Counties surrounding Marion County, these radios will work.
How long, how long have you had them in service?
Uh, two weeks, about two weeks.
Clarity is night and day different, or not?
Yes, oh yeah, yeah. The, the battery, the, the biggest thing that everybody's noticing so far is the battery life, 'cause other batteries are wearing out, they're aged, and they weren't lasting very long. The fire radios, we're getting about five days out of them before they have to charge them, where we were charging them every day with the older radios.
Yes, uh, for changing channels here.
Yes.
Is this, I don't know, I was gonna ask the police chief, is this something being looked at on the police end? 'Cause, I mean, there's pros and cons to it, I could, has anybody got off channel pretty easy since it's up here, and they done it right?
No, it, those, those knobs are pretty, uh, pretty stiff, it'd take pretty deliberate attempt to move them. That's another nice feature about them, that most of the controls are very stiff and not, not easily moved and bumped.
If I turn this on, does the orange button, like, open up the garage? I'm kidding.
You go right ahead, and I'll just tell them who did it.
Yeah.
Yes.
I'd just like to state, these were paid for by cash, we were gonna budget these over several-year period, or have to lease them, whatever. But anyway, the police and fire radios, the first portion of it is completely paid for by cash, which helps you guys out budget-wise.
Right. Which was a, a big concern, because, as we talked before, and I don't know if the public knows, but when we went through this originally the first couple of times, we were working out of the Mecca, the county budget, so all of a sudden, when both police and fire knew it was time to get new radios, we're talking, you know, two hundred thousand plus per department, that it was kind of a scary budget item, that's for sure, and still somewhat is, but...
And like I said, with us being able to move forward when we did, and realize some savings that we probably wouldn't have had with some trade-in costs and things like that, so...
I would like to thank you guys for your work that you did in getting the best price and the best equipment for our departments.
Thank you. Well, again, we appreciate the, the help on this council's end to secure-
Programming-wise, how, how's that working now? As far as programming, what you, talk groups you want on your, is Motorola originally, what templates you want, or whatever?
Yeah, yeah, we have, we have a standard template, we have a standard fire, and a standard EMS template that we use, that we had pre-programmed into the radios before we got them, and they are Wi-Fi capable, so all the programming changes going forward will be done on the fly.
And they can be done through the department?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes. If I so choose to.
Right.
There's really no need for us to, but if we wanted to, we could certainly have that capability. Any other questions?
Did you get the, is the mayor, did you get a radio, or are you tired of them?
No, and there's no provision, Jim, to, when we leave those in people's homes, to, to find them. That's one technology they haven't solved yet. You remember, years ago, we used to have to do Mecca talk-around, because if you got on the north side of the hospital, you couldn't hear the radio.
Or like in a basement or something?
Yes.
In a sub-basement of a hospital, you couldn't hear nobody.
Yeah, so that's all, that's all disappeared now. Anyway, that concludes special presentations. Counsel, you have been presented a printed copy of the minutes of the previous meeting dated Monday, October 2nd. Floor is open for questions, comments, or any correction.
They're getting better.
No questions, comments, or corrections, I'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll make that said motion.
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. Public comments, counselor?
Nobody signed up except for Mr. Mills, he's our expert.
Okay. We'll go to committee reports, the youth council, our high school principal.
I was thinking it'd be hard to follow the excitement of the radios, but we will try. Bishop's here, he has a few announcements, and then I'll follow up with a few things coming up.
Um, so, next week is our, our, this week technically, is our start of swim season, so there'll be swim meets at the high school, and they'll be going to other schools to compete. We had, right after our last meeting, that we were here, we had our community service day, which went off amazingly, and we got to help around the communities and reach out all the way to, like, UND and surrounding areas, so Beech Grove definitely showed up for that in the rain. And, um, our band, this year moved up a ranking, so then they were competing with bigger schools that had way more funding, and we were able to get fifth in the state in that, so it's a massive accomplishment for them.
Thank you, sir. So, one really big thing that I wanna mention is, we did host our first teen court, really excited, and thanks to Craig Wiley for serving as judge that evening. We are, we hosted this through Reach for Youth, and thanks and appreciation goes to Community Health for kind of sponsoring that partnership, but we did host it that evening, it was very successful for our students that participated in it, so we're very excited, we'll host two more this year. Another thing that I'm happy to announce is, today we visited the State House, we were one of about a hundred and twenty schools that achieved between thirty and seventy-five percent dual-credit offerings and awards to students, and so we were a recipient of that award, Beach Grove High School today at the State House, very excited about that. And then, just kind of as we move toward navigating what you might have heard in the, the news recently with the grad pathways panel, we'll see that vote come out in December, and we'll be very interested and involved in what that looks like for high schools in, in the coming years. But we are positioned very well with our community service, with the offerings that we provide students for employability skills, and we'll continue to, to offer those and help students be better prepared. Any questions for us this evening?
I know that everybody on the council is very proud of the band, that way they performed and took fifth, but also, I know that in one of the band contests, after it was all over with, our band went up in the stands and cleaned trash up, picked trash up and put it in bags, and cleaned up, I think it was that Decatur, if I'm not mistaken, and it, you know, that shows pure class, our Beech Grove band.
It really does, those students do very, very well.
Oh, I just have from the, the middle school, and this has to do with the middle school, but Mrs. Wiley sent me the information on the disc golf come, it says, disc golf comes to Beach Grove Middle School, I won't read the whole thing, but the Beach Grove Middle School is the site of a central Indiana's newest nine-hole disc golf course. The nine-hole course was made possible by a grant awarded by Beach Grove Middle School Assistant Principal Ryan Morgan from Lowe's Heroes Project. The course which takes advantage of Beach Grove City, excuse me, the course which takes advantage of Beach Grove Middle School's Creekside Campus was designed by community member Jim Trueblood, so it was Jim Trueblood. So, they listed the names of the, the kids, I'm guessing this was maybe the high school kids that came and helped, I can mention their names if you want.
Sure.
Yeah, go ahead.
Many Beach Grove School students and staff worked alongside Lowe's employees to install the disc golf baskets. A special thanks to the following volunteers, DeAndre Henderson, Quentin Brooks, Nathan Laker, Rihanna Shaw, Samantha Warren, Robin Warner, Sophia Simon, Alexis Sterrett, Elijah Mattingly, Brent Crouch, Coach Matt English, Jamar Seals, Jalen Curry, Destin Fultz, Jalen Thomas, Griffin Wade, Gavin Hess, Coy Doyle, Jordan Brinkley, Vincent Pick, Caleb Arzenhalte, Isaac Stenit, and Josh Copenhagen. Thanks also to Rob Archer, Doug Busby, and family, and Kitty from Lowe's for their help with the project. The course will be used throughout the day by Beach Grove School, School students, and will be open to the community after school hours. For information, you can check out the golf disc, visit the website, and I gave the information to all the city council.
Awesome.
So, that was really very good for the, the school to bring to our area.
It will be. I think the, the benefit and beauty of being a, a community school is that we can make those connections for evening, and we're trying, we're talking about that with our strategic planning now as well, to continue those efforts.
Very good, very good, says a lot for the kids, they all were out there at the middle school, and it was cold and rainy with their shovels.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next up, a report from the ABC.
Good evening, council members. So, we had an ABC meeting today, we had three renewals. That was O'Gara's Irish Pub, Royal Penn doing business host expo, and Lucky's Pub. We had one business that withdrew their, withdrew their application, and that was Vita Cultural, it was a wine bar that was wanting to go in on Main Street, so, our next meeting will be held on December 4th. Any questions?
I have one unrelated to what you've done, a good job in what you have done.
Thank you.
And that is, congratulations.
Oh, thank you.
On your marriage, so...
We have a double, Amy, we have one on the way, too, so...
Okay, well, congratulations again.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Any updates on permits from the brewery?
Um, yes, actually, they have to submit an application to ATC, which is the Alcohol Tobacco Commission, and they will issue a manufactured license. So, this license allows them to do tasting, they can do, they can sell the beer there, but it's only what they are creating. So, and then they also have to submit to the TDB, which is the Tax and Tobacco Bureau, I believe, which is the federal level. But they will be connected with the Excise Cup for, or the Excise representative for our area, which is Officer Glenn Bell.
Okay.
So... I didn't get the chance today, but I will tomorrow. Yeah. And I'll reach out to them tomorrow and let them know what they need to do, so they can, they're prepared. So, it'll be exciting to have... Any other questions, comments, concerns? All right, thank you very much, have a great evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks. Greenscape Compliance and Public Safety Report, you, you folks should have that already. Last report, financial, Dan.
Good evening, councilors. In September and October, we made the following lease purchase payments. Twenty fifteen police cars, twelve thousand seven hundred and twenty-nine dollars, balance owing thirty-eight thousand one hundred and eighty-eight dollars. Twenty sixteen DPW and Parks vehicles, twenty-six thousand three hundred and four dollars and ninety-six cents, balance owing a hundred and fifty-seven thousand six hundred and sixty-seven dollars and forty-four cents. Twenty fourteen DPW Skidsteer, seven thousand eight hundred and ninety-two seventy-three, balance owing twenty-three thousand one hundred and twenty-five sixty-four. We are not obtaining a tax anticipation warrant this year. It is the first time in many years the city has not needed to have one. I am considering obtaining a line of credit just for the security, if it would offer us, in the event, we needed the money. Our lowest monthly bank balance this year was in May, when it dropped to three million two hundred and fifty-three thousand eight hundred and twenty-five dollars and fifty-seven cents. Our tax anticipation warrant for 2017 was one million two hundred and ninety-five thousand, so we never dipped into that money, yet we are required to pay interest on it. I tried to pay it off early, but we still have to pay the entire year of interest. When I took office in 2012, the tax anticipation warrant was two million three hundred and ninety-four thousand nine hundred and forty-six dollars and ninety-one cents. The rainy day fund had fifty-five thousand one hundred and thirty-three dollars in it. After tonight's transfer of twenty-nine thousand, it will have approximately five-hundred-and-five thousand in it. One of my goals was to discontinue the need for a tax anticipation warrant. My main goal was to see financial stability restored to the city. I feel both have been achieved, and I am thankful. The city website continues to grow and is a great asset to the citizens, it is a valuable resource to many, it still has not cost the taxpayers one penny since its inception. Community events can be added free of charge by emailing me at dan.mcmillan@beachgrove.com. Thanks to the website volunteers who continue to keep it updated at no cost to the taxpayers. Financial reports, debt service, bank balances, and more can be found on the city website at www.beachgrove.com. The corporation bank balance, as of the first of the month, was three million seven hundred and forty-three thousand eight hundred and ninety-three dollars and forty-five cents. The sewer had nine hundred and seventy-five thousand nine hundred and sixty-seven dollars and eighty-four cents. As always, if you have any question, my door is always open, thank you. Respectfully submitted, Dan McMillan, Car Treasure, City of Beech Grove. If anyone has any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Dan, on the line of credit is the, and knowing that, the idea is not to use the line of credit.
Exactly. Exactly.
But is the interest rate on that anywhere comparable to the tax anticipation warrant?
Well, previously, I would have said no way because we were always below 1 percent. I think the most we ever paid the bond bank was 0.77. I would have to come to the council and ask before time without knowing what the interest rate was for a tax anticipation warrant. Last year, I felt like they stuck it to us. Our interest rate was 2.77. And we had gotten a loan on the RDC refinance, and the interest rate on it was lower than what we got on the tax anticipation warrant. I'm running into a few problems as far as a line of credit because they're not making anything off of it unless we use it. So, a lot of them are very reluctant, and I was trying to figure out how we might be able to do this also. And that's actually use the Rainy Day Fund, which will be over a half million dollars in there after tonight. And like I say, I don't believe we would ever have to touch it. But if we did, that might be an alternative to even looking at outside banks.
On the tax anticipation warrant, and the city's not done this recently, but I think they did do it at one time. Might go back several years. But as far as on the six months, can a tax anticipation warrant, does someone deal on the six months where, say, you're going to get it the first year and pay it back middle of...
What we have done ever since I've done it is we get it for the entire year, and you pay it back in May, or when your May taxes come in in June, and then again in December. Last year, they didn't even want to do that.
Okay.
They're just not making enough money off of it.
I know that when they did it the six months and it was able to be, you know, paid off the time, the interest rate in the bank versus the interest rate of the taxation warrant were pretty similar and so on. But I just haven't seen where, and I think it's Greenwood and another community, it's all the same. It seems like everything's based on a year.
It is. And in June, I tried to pay this back for the entire year. They said, "Well, we'll gladly take your money, but you're going to pay the interest on them last six months." And so, I guess that's how they go out.
I guess part of my thought is that it's good to see the numbers, you know, the way they are, that that can be a possibility, or it will be a possibility. But I was just wondering, too, that if, you know, a smaller amount was borrowed and was able to be paid back at a quicker time, showing the need wasn't there, that it would offset, you know, any interest, but...
Well, seeing that was something else, Bud. When they, last year, they wanted me to take one out for 1.795, and I said, "No, we don't need it. I don't really think we'll need the 1.2." And it shows that we didn't because we never went below that amount. But...
Because, you know, communities sometimes, it might not be this year, but it could be two years down the road where cities have a harder time when it comes to finances. We've seen it several years ago when tax caps and assessed value situations went down, and then all of a sudden, it was like a perfect storm. And then, at that time, in two or three years from now, we have to take out one, and people might seem to think, "Oh, the city has an issue," because now you've got to take out a tax anticipation warrant, which was common practice anyway. So, it was just food for thought.
Well, and, you know, I'd like to thank our department heads for living within their budget. That is, you know, that's big right there. The mayor doesn't call them and say, "Oh, that $30,000 that you guys don't spend it because I need it for something else." And that happened in the past, and I'm not blaming anybody, but I just think that we as a city have been more fiscally responsible.
You know, I'd like to make a comment, too. This is huge that he's not going to get a tax anticipation warrant next year. Because I filled in and was the court treasurer for about a year and a half, and I dislike that. What that is, is we are just straight borrowing the money until our taxes come in, and then you pay interest on borrowed money. Whereas, right now, Dan has got it to the point to where we are running on our own money, and we're paying no interest. And my hat's off to you. And I think it's a good idea to not get that line of credit if at all possible, and the council can fall back on that half a million dollars that's in the Rainy Day Fund should the need arise. But I think with your financial stewardship, the need's not going to arise.
Well, thank you, Chris. I appreciate that. And just to give you a little credit, the first year you were in here, a year and a half, you lowered the amount of the tax anticipation warrant because I looked at it previous to that. And it was significantly...
I signed a $3 million check paying that thing back that one, in 2010, and...
And you guys did it at the end of the year, which was extremely terrible because you got Christmas, New Years, and, you know, and then you've got to worry about how you're going to come up with all these monies and moving everything around.
And agreeing with being good news, I was just taking a kind of a cautious act that if it was able to do a smaller tax anticipation warrant, if it was based upon the six months and the interest rate, wasn't going to be a problem. But it looks like it would be, so...
Before I took over, the financials were in such disarray that the bond bank wouldn't even touch the city. We had to go to regions. And when we were able to at least go to the bond bank, it saved us $80,000 that first year. And then, after that, it just started going down, and then Dan has continued that trend big time.
Dan, do you have a stormwater balance by chance?
I don't believe I do. I know we're transferring money into the stormwater tonight, but I don't have the, you know, I don't have a balance of it, and I can get that for you.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. That concludes committee reports. No unfinished business. New business, we have two items. The first is General Orders Number 10, 2017, on first reading. That is an ordinance that totally redoes Chapter 78 of the Code of Ordinances pursuant to parking motor vehicles. And I'll open it up for comments or questions from council members. On page two, the bold print is new. The regular print is existing, the current ordinance. And the same way on page three.
Mayor, how did this ordinance come to being? Was there some things that were seen out of guilt or whatever?
Yeah. We're seeing more and more vehicles parked on streets that have no curbs or sidewalks. And some of these roads are narrow, and some of these roads, it's never been addressed, that are thoroughfares, that there shouldn't be any parking on them at all. And then, also on page four, it talks about Main Street parking from Emerson to Eighth Two hours between 9:00 and 5:00, except Sundays and public holidays. What goes away is parking off of Main Street. That was on there for hour and a half. That has been taken away. The reason for that is people also live there. And then, the penalty has, and the council can revert back to that, has been corrected to where that is consistent with the court fees for other traffic violations. So, and plus, council, this ordinance was originally established in 1961, and over the years has been amended. So, I thought we'd just delete it in its entirety and introduce a new ordinance. So, I'll open it up for any questions or comments.
Do you need to read the ordinance in?
You can. If there's not any questions and it's ready to be introduced, we can introduce it by title only.
Okay. I got you.
I'll make a motion to introduce it by title only, then.
Second. And I'll, we'll have to vote individually, beginning on my left.
Title only.
Title only.
Title only.
Title only.
Title only.
Title only.
This time, I'll ask the clerk to read General令数Number 10, 2017, into the record by title only.
General令数Number 10, 2017, is an ordinance that amends Chapter 78 of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Beach Grove pursuant to parking motor vehicles.
Thank you. General令数Number 10, 2017, is up for approval on first reading only. This time, I'll ask for a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion that we approve General令数Number 10, first reading.
Second motion.
Just, okay, wish maybe I should have asked my question earlier. I just wanted to make sure. I talked to a couple businesses. So, when this takes effect, and there'll definitely be signage, so there'll be signage. So, will there be like a little bit of a 60 to 90-day alert when this goes into effect that will kind of give businesses just a little heads up on it, or...
We can.
Okay.
We can.
But hopefully, if the signs are there, that'll be, but I mean, I, just for consideration.
We have a recommendation on first reading and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. We will hear this on second reading only at the December council meeting. Thank you. Final order of business is transfer of funds, and I'll defer to the clerk treasurer.
Below is a request to transfer appropriations and funds. These do not increase the budget. Number one, transfer $3,500 from community center medical insurance to community center electric. Number two, transfer $4,000 from community center medical insurance to community center salaries. Three, transfer $15,000 from police fuel to police repairs and maintenance. Number four, transfer $460 from senior center office supplies to senior center repairs and maintenance. Number five, transfer $231.29 from senior center medical supplies to senior center repairs and maintenance. Six, transfer $5,600 from fire clothing allowance to fire protective clothing. Number seven, transfer $73,000 from public safety police to public safety professional services radios. Number eight, transfer $26,000 from public safety fire to public safety professional services radios. Number nine, transfer $45,000 from public safety air packs lease, the principal, to public safety professional services radios. Ten, transfer $5,000 from public safety air packs lease interest to public safety professional services radios. Eleven, transfer $95,000 from public safety police lobby and extras to public safety professional services radios. Fund transfers. Number one, transfer $78.74 from the 2014 FEMA SALT grant fund to the MVH Fund Number 201. Number two, transfer $29,000 from Main Street Loans Fund Number 744 to the Rainy Day Fund Number 161 per ordinance. Number three, transfer $10,000 from Sewage MOU to Sewage IDPW. Number four, transfers $50,000 from Sewage MOU to Sewage Landfill. Five, transfer $22,000 from Sewage MOU to Sewage Liability Insurance. Number six, transfer $5,000 from Sewage MOU to Sewage Recording Fees. Number seven, transfer $8,000 from Sewage MOU to Sewage Postage. The following request increases the stormwater budget, but as of October 31st, the fund had a balance, and I didn't know this was in here, Dennis, $230,206.77. Did you get that?
Yeah.
Number one, add $100,000 in appropriation in stormwater services, which is currently in the negative, by $40,631.38. The following request increases the sewer budget. Brad has been doing some tank removal and cleanup at DPW. Consequently, he received reimbursement for $23,681.09. Money's received in cannot be received into a specific appropriation. They can only be received into a fund. That was received into the sewer fund. It was not included as revenue in the 2017 or 2018 budgets. For that money to be spent, we need to increase the appropriation. So, I am asking to make the following increase to the sewer budget. Increase in appropriation number 606-903-61.000 by $23,681.09. Thank you. Respectfully submitted, Dan McMillan, Court Treasurer, City of Beach Grove. And if anybody's got any questions on these, basically, we have done this for anybody that's been on the council for any time, every year. And alls we're doing is, there was money left over in one appropriation. We moved it over to somewhere else that is running short. And basically, we cannot leave anything in the negative at the end of the year. So, this the way of, some things I move if they're in the same category, but if they're not, I have to come to the council for approval, and that's what I'm doing on these.
Floor's open for any questions or comments. If not, I'd like to do these as one motion and one approval. So, I'll ask for a motion to approve the transfer request from the clerk treasurer.
May you motion approve the appropriation?
I'll second that.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. That concludes new business. Council comments, beginning on my left. Buddy?
Mayor, you do a good job of trying to keep the council informed of a lot of things. And I, sometimes, some of the podium things can be long. They can be, they're important. But I did enjoy the IPL presentation tonight, and I thought the council asked some pretty good questions and things I certainly didn't think of. I do want to also state that RDC, Don Webb, did a, I thought, a good job on his presentation, and I do want to thank them again. And I always, we talk about police and fire, and definitely a big part of the city. But I wanted, and since Brad's here, is to mention how important of apartment that you have, and the things that you have to do, and the things that you don't have to do tomorrow. I mean, it's like anything else, but you do it with less people than what was done before, and you still get the job done. And that's a pretty good job. So, I know that I appreciate it. I want to thank two other people real quick. One's Liz Lamping. Her involvement in things has helped keep a lot of us up to date of what's going on throughout the city, and I'm appreciative of that. And also, I had a comment the other day about the mayor's wife, Patty Buckley. Once again, you are definitely someone who, I don't know how to, I want to put it the best way, an ambassador when it comes to good things with people feel in the community along with the mayor. So, once again, you get two for, well, two for one out of the deal. So, thank you very much. That's all I have.
See, I want to, again, I thank our department head, Brad, and Rob, and Mark. One thing I want to say about Halloween night, we had a police officer up in the northwest section of Beach Grove. He was patrolling the streets, making sure there's no one speeding down the streets. But he was also giving candy to kids trick-or-treating. And to me, he was showing these kids not to be afraid of police officers. And it was such a rewarding thing for me to see that. I went on to talk to him, and I would like for you to commend him. I think you know who it was, Mark. But he did a great job in talking to the kids.
Thank you, everyone, for coming. I'm like Buddy, I enjoyed the presentation IPL put out tonight, and that's all I got.
I just want to congratulate a Beach Grove police officer fought in the 911 Slugfest on Saturday night, our officer, Tim White. I was there. Tim won his match against the fire department. It's a, it's a great event. It's for Make-A-Wish Foundation. It's all charity. He had a good, good collection of friends. I know I was there with about 30 people watching the fight, but it was a pretty good show. But just congrats, Tim.
I just want to thank the middle school again and the vice principal for the disc golf. Learn about disc golf. Go see it. Take your family and find, get your new frisbee. The frisbee for the cages, it's a great addition to our city. And it's really great that the middle school and the kids came out together, and it just shows how, with the community effort, all the good things we can do for us here in the city. Thank you. Thank you.
Just congratulations to our city for being done with the tax anticipation warrant. I'm very glad to hear that.
I just want to thank everybody for coming. That's all I got.
Thank you, council. In your packet was a clean copy of the salary ordinance for 2018. When we come back in December, I'm going to ask you to amend that to accommodate a part-time salary in DPW for a mechanic. So I'll ask you to approve that on all three readings, December, in December. That will take unanimous consent from the council in order to do that. So that's, that's coming in December. The high school has their Thanksgiving dinner on Monday, November 20th, from 4:30 to 7:00 at the Beach Grove High School. So that's a very nice program. And I just wanted to make that known publicly. If anybody is interested in having a nice dinner, they should call 759-1149 to reserve. The Veterans Day program on the steps of City Hall is this Saturday at 11:00 a.m. If the weather is inclement, we'll move inside for a nice ceremony. Back on Labor Day, we had a water drive for the folks in Texas, and that lasted through Labor Day. We got our official weight, and the citizens of this area donated over 21,000 pounds of water. So that's, and Cleaners has documented that. In your packet, there should be a copy of our application for the Indiana Clean Community Challenge for 2018. We're on track with our environmental programs that we've established concerning medicine pickup, recycling, flora programs in the city. So that is all good stuff, and we'll continue into 2018 with that. And then I put in your packet a schedule for the Oakr Grant, planning grant that, that the city received. So we're caught up until March of 2018, and that is when we submit an application for funding for the actual construction of the facades. So having said all that, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a second motion.
I'll second a motion and adjourn.
The meeting is adjourned at 8:36 p.m. Thank you so much.